Today is Wednesday, May 3rd, 2023. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heather, would you please take role? Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Here.
Mayor Sullivan.
Here.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Here.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Here.
City manager.
Here.
City attorney.
Here.
DPW director.
Here.
Finance director.
Here.
Police chief.
Here.
Interim fire chief.
Here.
City engineer.
Here.
I think role call is complete.
Thank you. The families of Art Anderson and Sid Scrimger here? Yes? Okay. So out of consideration for you guys, I'm going to read these first. So if you don't want to sit through the whole meeting. Consideration of a resolution of thanks and appreciation. At this time, council could take action to adopt a resolution of thanks and appreciation in honor of Sid Scrimger. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Support.
Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac. Motion approved.
Thank you. Resolution of thanks and appreciation in honor of Sid Scrimger. Whereas Sid Scrimger served the citizens of Manistee as fire chief from March 1995 until his retirement in May 2010. And whereas during his tenure with the city, Sid demonstrated outstanding knowledge, leadership, and professionalism in the execution of many duties and responsibilities. And whereas Sid served with loyalty, integrity, dedication, and honor as second district city council member from November 2011 to January 2013. Whereas Sid passed away on March 5th, 2023, though he will forever remain a friend to the employees of the City of Manistee. And whereas Sid Scrimger served the City of Manistee caring for the community with pride and dedication, now therefore be it. Resolved that on behalf of the City of Manistee Council and the citizens of the community, we give thanks and appreciation in honor of Sid Scrimger for his service to his community. Further sayeth not this resolution.
I don't know who wants this. Is there somebody here for? I can take it, and then I'll get it to the family. Thank you.
Consideration of a resolution of thanks and appreciation. At this time, council could take action to adopt a resolution of thanks and appreciation in honor of Art Anderson. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Resolution of thanks and appreciation in honor of Arthur Art Anderson Jr. Whereas Art Anderson founded the Gals Pizza and Subs on May 31st, 1973, providing the community with jobs and a meeting place for 50 years. And whereas Art gave back to the community by coaching and mentoring many local youths through baseball, football, and soccer. He was instrumental in founding of both the Manistee County Junior and Senior Baseball Association and the Manistee County Youth Football Association. And whereas Art's love of sports and community continued to shine through his efforts in coaching men's softball and serving in the USA Softball of Michigan Softball Commissioner for over 10 years. And whereas he was recognized over the years for his community involvement, in 1984, Art was named Outstanding Young Man for his distinguished service given to his community, state, and country by the J.C.'s. In 1986, Art was given the Outstanding Citizen Award by the U.S. Veterans of Foreign Wars. In 1992, the Manistee Recreation Association acknowledged his contributions to youth sports by naming Art as a recipient of the Charles E. Shodel Outstanding Service Award. Whereas Art Anderson served with loyalty, integrity, dedication, and honor as a second district city council member for three terms from November 1991 to November 1997. And whereas Art passed away on March 18th, 2023, though he will forever remain in the hearts of the citizens of this community. And whereas Art Anderson served the City of Manistee caring for the community with pride and dedication, now therefore be it. Resolved that on behalf of city council and the citizens of this community, we give thanks and appreciation in honor of Art Anderson Jr. for his service to his community. Further sayeth not this resolution.
Okay. Public hearings, we have none. Citizens comments on agenda-related items.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, and city employees. Jenny Pelton, 329 First Avenue. Citizen of Manistee since 1992. Currently on the Ramsdale Regional Center for the Arts for the last five years. I'm here to endorse your support for the budget line item for the Ramsdale Regional Center for the Arts. My introduction to the Ramsdale was with Nancy Lyons, who asked me to be part of what was happening in the theater in the 1990s. The work that those volunteers did then brought the building back to life. The work that has been done since the RRCA Board of Volunteers has taken over has brought it into its shining jewel state. The amount of progress in the building since 1994, when I had a bucket list privilege of performing on the stage of the Ramsdale, is night and day. The city council has received an updated list of all the items that the RRCA has done in the last almost seven years to upgrade the building, far exceeding the current investment the city has given to the building. Without the work of the RRCA Board and so many community donors, volunteers, and employees, the building would not be in the condition it is in now. There are so many people committed to this building. Even our employees volunteer their time to keep things going on a very tight budget. It was mentioned at a previous city council meeting that the RRCA Board needs to do more to raise money for the Ramsdale. We are currently all volunteering in all capacities of running the building. We have a fundraising campaign going on. We have a full concert series for the summer. A children's camp, plays, art shows, opera, and next weekend, our largest fundraiser of the year, our annual gala focusing on the 120-year history of the Ramsdale. Since January 1st, each member of our board, which there are six, has put in over 200 hours of volunteer time to the Ramsdale Theater. We work hard to keep this building alive and well and to offer the citizens of Manistee and its visitors a first-class venue. And all we're asking is a continuation of a commitment by the city to support the building. Thank you for your time and support of the Ramsdale Regional Center for the Arts.
Thank you.
I am Linda Alby, and I live at 365 Lighthouse Way South. And I'm happy to be here to meet with the Manistee City Council. As residents of Manistee, my husband and I would like to express our deep gratitude and appreciation for your stalwart support of the Ramsdale Regional Center for the Arts during the past years. This extraordinary historic building and art center is an integral part of the Manistee community and contributes to the well-being of our citizens and the economic growth of our region. We're here today to request that you continue to support the RRCA. Its historic 120 years in this community has meant a great deal. We were both impressed, my husband and I, when in the mid-'90s, the Ramsdale Regional Theater underwent a major renovation that was made possible from donations by generous citizens of Manistee and the surrounding area. People cared about this exceptional structure and wanted to see this asset improved and maintained. We've had many visitors to our community over the past 20 years that are amazed that our small community has this iconic building and iconic art center. Throughout world history, the arts have played an important role in the lives of citizens, so much so that most of the arts have had a long history of receiving major support from their governments. The RRCA has become one of the largest assets in Manistee. We point with great pride that our civic leaders understand the importance of the arts to this community. The RRCA is not a liability for our community, but it is a huge asset that needs your continued support. The RRCA provides physical, social, cultural, and economic benefits to our region, things that are not always easy to quantify or measure. It has become the home to a wealth of cultural experiences for so many of all ages. Many friends and family have had the pleasure to attend events at the Ramsdale as well as take part in art exhibits, art classes, or perform in theater productions. We know that you understand the value of this beautiful building and what it provides for our community. So please continue to give your full support to this distinctive, remarkable, and unparalleled community asset. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Bob Armstrong. I have a home at 3730 Lakeshore Road. Madam Mayor, honorable councilpeople, Mr. Gannamow. I appreciate the opportunity to speak here tonight. I'm addressing item C on the agenda here. It does address one of the concerns we had that we feel is necessary for us to proceed in that venture. It however, does not address another critical one that we did express in our letters and the packets that we prepared, and that is item 10 in the concession agreement. We find it very difficult to make a financial commitment if we can be evicted on 60 days' written notice without cause. We have no problem with eviction for cause. If we're given notice of a breach or defect, four days to correct it, we have no problem with that whatsoever. To be basically evicted on a 60-day written notice with no cause doesn't incentivize us to invest the money there. So I'm hoping that we can address that also, even though it's not state... Forgive me if I'm out of order here. Please let me know if I am.
I think that we should just stay with the liquor license for right now because that's not on the agenda for us to even make a motion on. So I think we should just stay with the liquor license at the moment.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I reside at Second Street here in Manistee. I'm kind of curious to see how many hands of people are here for Ramsdale. It seems pretty hefty. I am a member of the board of directors of the Lakeside Club. I do not represent them. We didn't... That would require a meeting and all that, and did not have that.
Could you pull that microphone down a little bit? You pull it... Thank you.
Is that better?
Much, thank you.
I love Manistee. I've lived in seven different states, southwest, up north, down south, Midwest. I'm a Michigan native, and nowhere have I seen another city like Manistee. You've got so much beauty, you've got so much going on, and you've got so much to offer here. I'm here to ask that you please keep the budget for 2024 the same as the 2023 for the Ramsdale Regional Center for the Arts. Their mission statement reads, "To optimize an irreplaceable regional center for culture, education, and social activities through programming, excellence, fiscal stability, strong community partnership, and committed volunteers." All nonprofits need financial support from several different sources, especially small-town nonprofits. Because these organizations do not have large reserves to fall back on, they require aid from the city government where they reside as well as local community support. The amount of aid from the city government may send a message to citizens regarding their value that they place on that city asset. It is my understanding that the original agreement was 110,000, and over the years, it's been decreased to 50,000. This is a gem that provides our community with pride, education, and training in theater, dance, art, and a variety of medians for young and for old, as well as entertainment. It has a purpose. It creates revenue for our local businesses by drawing people here to attend events. In my three-plus years that I have lived here, I have seen growth. I have seen change. I see tourism rising. I see new businesses opening, continued support of established businesses. The city is working toward attracting more and more tourists. People are coming back each year because we have more than just beautiful beaches. Monday, the Ramsdale's spring, summer, fall calendar of events was posted on the city's Facebook page. What a wonderful way for visitors to spend an afternoon or an evening while they are vacationing here in Manistee. We have such a rich history and something that surrounding cities do not have, and that's the Ramsdale Regional Center for the Arts. So I ask you to please continue that support and by not decreasing any amount that is given to them, to this wonderful center. Thank you.
Thank you.
City representatives, fellow audience. My name is Ramona DiGiorgio-Menezes. I live at 705 Locust Street. I've lived here since 1991. I've been actively involved in many aspects of the community. And you know all the things that previous people already said. I'm not going to repeat them. But the Ramsdale Regional Center for the Arts was the first place my young children could go and see professional art performed. I could see their horizons broaden in their faces. I could see the excitement. And it's nothing you could read about in books. You actively participated in the audience. You got to see people that lived in your community singing and dancing and performing. You got to visit artists and see their things on the walls. And that is something that cannot be overlooked or underappreciated. When we know that that's there, we can offer friends and family to go to the Ramsdale to see a performance. When I'm down in Grand Rapids or in Traverse City, I hear people say, "You've got that fantastic place. The Ramsdale Something or Other, right?" And I go, "Yeah, we do." And I'm so glad that there has been support from the city, knowing that fundraising and finding those dollars is a hard thing to do. I'm hoping that you'll consider other places to make cuts and not the Ramsdale. Because things like the Ramsdale are important to people who can't come here and speak for themselves. It's important to people that maybe they can't come anymore, maybe they're homebound. But knowing it's there brings them joy and brings memories. And it's a place that we need to protect, continue volunteering at, working towards, fundraising for, and supporting, whether you're in a city official position or whether you're a person that enjoys going to the Ramsdale. Thank you.
Thank you.
Normally, we don't have this problem on the stage. I want to thank city council for allowing us to speak tonight. My name is Jackie Carnes. I live 922 Ginheart Road. I live in the outskirts of Manistee. However, I spend majority of my time in Manistee at 101 Maple Street. If those of you who aren't sure of the regional Ramsdale, man, I still want to call it the Ramsdale Theater. The RRCA, that's where it is. It's been there for 120 years. I'm not going to repeat what everyone has already said as well. However, I do want to plant a seed. This building is not just a building. There have been so many people who have helped to maintain it through physical volunteerism, through monetary support, and the city has been one of the largest supporters in that effort. So much renovation has been done, and still some needs to be done, things to preserve it. Someone said, "You can't put a price on what is there. You can put a price on the building. You can't put a price on what goes on in the building." And it can't be done in Manistee anywhere else. You have a collaboration of so many peoples, all economic backgrounds, all nationalities. My gosh, you have so much variety of cultures that combine for one organization, one place. And that is to promote the arts and promote everything that goes along with it. So on behalf of the Manistee civic players, we support all that the RRCA does and will continue to do, and we hope that the city council will continue with its financial support as well as the support in your hearts. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Deb Green. I live at 300 Spruce Street. I'm here representing myself, and also I am president of the Lakeside Club. I'm not going to repeat all of the things that everybody else has said about the wonderful building and everything that takes place there. I think you get the picture. But I would like to talk about, a little bit about my personal experience. My daughter was married there in 2017, and that facility for something like that was beyond belief. I also attend many of the events. And as Lakeside president, we have held the Festival of Trees there the last two years. And it has been part of Sleigh Bell Weekend, and it has become, you know, a very well-attended community event. And we also raised a lot of money to support some nonprofits in Manistee. I don't know where, in the downtown area, we would be able to hold an event of that size if we did not have the Ramsdale. One other thing I want to bring up that hasn't been brought up is if, for some reason, the city would decide to stop supporting the Ramsdale financially. Everyone is kind of worried that the RRCA might not be successful. They may fail. If that were to happen, what would happen to that building? Does the city have a Plan B? That's a concern. You know, it's a beautiful building, and it would be such a shame for it to go back to sitting empty and not being used as it should be used and as it was meant to be used. Thank you for your past support, and I hope that you will continue to support the Ramsdale, not only financially, but also mentally and emotionally. And thank you.
Thank you.
Nancy Swenson.
I live on Morton Road, 11900, the Manistee address in Mason County. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. I precede some of the others who spoke by a few years. I've been here for about 35 years, not long enough to be considered a native yet, but you know, I'm getting closer. I remember getting involved in the Ramsdale Theater as a way to meet people as a new teacher. And I met people from all over the city. I also remember that at that time, it was what we called the... I call it the shabby chic period before renovation. Artists, performing artists, Robin and Linda Williams came in to do a concert with the Spirit of the Woods backing them. And I remember bringing them in from the alley doorway, and she stood on stage and said, "Oh my." This is before renovation. She said, "We played everything from great music halls to gymnotoriums. This is special." And it is. I've had an opportunity in this little town to listen to and meet Jeff Daniels. I've had an opportunity to be part of a play that Ray Bradbury wrote. And indeed, he came and saw it one night and spoke to people. At the time, we had a few more seats. There was standing room only. We had 600 people in for opening night. You know two of other people who have gotten their start in some sort of performance occupations. Of course, James Earl Jones, Tony Trucks, Paul Craig, who's coming to do the gala this weekend, or next weekend. Innumerable people. But not everybody comes to make a living out of performing. There have been so many people over the years of every age involved in the theater in some fashion. Now, not all of them through the plays. Some are doing backstage work, some are volunteering for events at the Ramsdale. I had an opportunity to perform with students of mine from the high school. So it was a great intergenerational place, and it always has been. I do remember the times when, in its shabby chic phase, the city, I think, gave the Ramsdale Building about $5,000 or $6,000 to try to cover the cost of the lights. And we were the only people in it at the time, other than the boxing club in the basement. Of course, it costs more because we've renovated it. But let me add one more thing. I have been a longtime tour guide as well as usher at the Ramsdale. And I live for those moments when I take people into the house, the auditorium, and they go, "Oh." Just that gasp. And they go, "Wow. You have this in this little town." And I ask, "Well, where are you from?" Over Christmas, Sleigh Bell. We had people from Indiana. We had people from the Detroit area, from Grand Rapids area, from the Lansing area, from Traverse City. But routinely, especially during Sleigh Bell, but other times of the year, we get people from around the state and out of state. And they come, and that's one place that they'd like to visit. And we make that possible. Now, we could raise our prices, I'm sure, on the tours, but we do charge them for that. And people come in, and they're just thrilled. And a couple weeks ago, there was a concert of... A tribute concert. And I could tell that there were a lot of first-time people there. Why? Because they come in and they stare at those lunettes in the lobby. And you know what they are, too. They look at those paintings and their mouths agape. And I said, "Well, where are you from? And I hear, you know, 'Have you been here before?'" Lot of folk who've not been in there before, even a few locals now and then. So I really appreciate the help that the RRCA and the building receives from the city council. We really need that. We're working at becoming financially more solvent, but...
I'm going to have to cut you off.
Okay.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is James E. Taylor III. I'm applied for the resident on the Housing Commission. I wanted to introduce myself. I'm originally from Onakama. I wanted to be on the council, or on the commission because I'd like to see things get better. And I feel the only way to do it is to be getting involved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Roberta Huff, and I live at 301 Century Terrace. And I have also put in my desire to serve on the Housing Commission as I have lived at Century Terrace for over 15 years and have participated in many of the activities. And speaking for myself and other residents, at this time, we would like to see another resident council established. And we're hoping that this can be done since all the building changes have been done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Good evening. Thank you for giving me the time to be here. My name's Al Fry. I live at 2264 Murky Road. I've been a member of the Ramsdale Regional Center for the Arts. I've been a member of the Ramsdale Board since its inception, seven years ago, I believe. Currently, I'm the vice president of the board. I'm here tonight to specifically talk about the lease agreement that I know you're going to discuss later on in the meeting. I've worked on many boards in my life and I've never worked on one with more committed members than the RRCA. This group is running the theater while we continue to search for new management. Every one of these board members is putting in between five and 15 hours per week for a volunteer job. We all do it because we care deeply about the Ramsdale and understand its importance to this community. The Ramsdale is one of the gems of this city that truly sets Manistee apart from the surrounding areas. There's not a single arts organization in this country that can support itself by general income, ticket sales, and rentals alone. All organizations, even the Kennedy Center in Washington DC, needs public support and government support. A $50,000 investment from the city is equal to roughly 10% of our budget. I can only imagine that it is a minuscule percent of the total city budget. This minimal investment is paid back to the city in numerous ways. RRCA maintains the building. RRCA purchased equipment and furnishings which are under lease, become property of the city. And you all have a long list of those. RRCA, along with the Vogue and other landmarks, draw countless residents and visitors who live, play, and spend money here. The RRCA programming and events like the Children's Theater Camp exposes local men, women, and children to the arts. These experiences can change people for the rest of their lives. Additionally, we are now the fiduciary for the Sleigh Bell Festival. At no cost to the Sleigh Bell Festival, we're handing the funding and financing for them. I believe that the current lease agreement between the city and the RRCA is fair and equitable to both parties. And I beg you not to make changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are on the consent agenda and considered by a city manager to be routine matters. Prior to approval, any member of council may have an item removed and taken up during regular portion of the meeting. Items include approval amendments, cash balances, revenue and expenses, quarterly financial update, quarterly investment report, consideration of ordinance Z 23-01, text amendments to zoning ordinance, consideration of the American Legion Auxiliary Poppy Distribution, notification regarding next study session. At this time, council could take action to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Heather, would you please take a roll?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. I've finished business. We have none. Consideration of adopting the 2023-2024 Budget and Capital Improvement Plan and approving the Downtown Development Authority proposed budget for the fiscal year 2023-2024. Under sections 7-4 of the Charter, the annual budget must be adopted before May 15th of each year. The budget has been subject to multiple study sessions and public hearing. Additionally, the city of Manistee is required by state statute to approve the budget of the Downtown Development Authority before it can be approved, the budget... I'm sorry, I just lost myself. Before it can be adopted by the Downtown Development Board, the DDA's proposed budget was presented to the city council on April 4th, 2023. City Council Regular Meeting was presented to city council at April 4th... I am so sorry. April 4th, 2023, City Council Regular Meeting. If approved by council, the Downtown Development Authority must still hold a public hearing on their budget and vote to adopt it. At this time, council could take action to adopt a resolution approving the 2023-2024 Budget and Capital Improvement Plan and approve the Downtown Development Authority proposed budget for fiscal year 2023-2024. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Heather, would you please take a roll?
Before we jump there, discussion, how does this impact this discussion we just had here? Are we doing this later? I mean, the DDA, the budget for the Ramsdale Theater is in this budget. If we approve this budget, that approves their budget, correct? Okay, that's, I just want to make sure that we all understood that. Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan. Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Of purchasing a tractor for beach cleaning. The city of Manistee has leased a tractor for the past five years to clean the beaches at First Street and Fifth Avenue. Due to production delays causing, during the pandemic, leasing a tractor is currently not an option. Freeman Creek Equipment and Free Soil has a unit meeting the city's minimum, has a unit meeting the city's minimum specifications. The purchase of the tractor has been proposed in the fiscal year 2024 budget. Approving the purchase at this time will secure the unit and allow the city to begin grooming the beaches in late May. At this time, council could take action to approve the purchase of a 70 HP Kubota tractor at a Sourcewell contract price of $57,235.19 from Freeman Creek Equipment. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Is this in our budget?
No worries.
It is in the budget that you just approved, which goes into effect July 1st. I brought this to you hoping that that budget was approved and that the tractor was included in it. If you approve this tonight, Freeman Creek will allow us to demonstrate or basically borrow that tractor from now until July 1st. And then will invoice us once the new fiscal year begins.
Okay, great.
How does compared horsepower to the one you've been using?
It's just a couple horsepower less, but it's about three horsepower more than the minimums needed for that beach rake.
Will you use this for anything other than the beach rake?
Actually, we used to, we used to lease two tractors, one at the treatment plant and one at, one for the beaches. And they cost us about $2,200 a year. Those are not available anymore. So my intention would be to use this tractor for the beach cleaning during the summer. And then I can put it down at the treatment plant to help with snow removal and offloading deliveries and that sort of thing.
So you're...
So we have some year-round use.
Okay.
Thank you. Heather, would you please take a roll?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac. Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of British Landing Enterprises LLC Local Government Liquor License Approval. British Enterprises LLC is requesting a local government approval to apply to Michigan Liquor Control Commission, MLCC, for the following licenses: Class C liquor, especially designated merchant, Sunday sales, AM and PM, outdoor service authorization, entertainment permit, and catering for the First Street Beach Concession. At this time, council could take action to approve the resolution supporting the request from British Enterprises LLC for the following liquor license: Class C liquor, specially designated merchant, Sunday sales, AM, PM, outdoor service authorization, entertainment permit, and catering.
So I'll just mention, so the agreement is a basic concessions agreement that was agreed to. While Mr. Anderson did have a proposal for multiple items in the, in his proposal. Ultimately, he won the bid as the First Street concessionaire. As far as liquor licenses, running weddings out of there, that all would have to be approved separately. Talking with the city attorney, there is, or the county is overquoted by eight Class C liquor licenses right now. I'm not aware of a transfer. I think speaking with the city attorney, it might not be appropriate to take action if there isn't really a liquor license associated with it at this point.
I guess what I could comment on that is that I've talked to the city managers. I'm really not sure exactly what license is being applied for. The SDM license and all the permits do not require council approval. Those are things that go to Liquor Control Commission. They approve it. We have no input on that. The Class C license, if it's a new Class C, there are no new Class Cs available in the city of Manistee. There's a quota limit based on population. We're eight over our quota on Class C licenses right now in the city. If it's a transfer of an existing Class C, that does not require city council approval. And so I'm not, there are a couple of other Class C licenses, but I'm not sure from what is being requested, which of those licenses is applicable. I guess the other thing that I express some concern about is that currently our lease agreement does not provide for a sale of alcohol. It's a food concession. And so if council is going to approve a liquor license, I think you also need to approve an amendment of the lease. Along with, I think the tenant was asking for a change to the termination ability without cause. So I think all of these things, I think, require some, at least some additional study. If not for any other reason, then to understand exactly what license is being applied for.
Okay, so, go ahead.
Well, I, I don't see why we need a license down on the beach. I don't believe we need, I enforced the law down there for years and I just don't see that we need to put drinks down there.
Are we at discussion point yet? There's been no...
We haven't made a motion.
Do you need to make a motion on this then?
So no motion? There's nothing to talk about yet?
Anybody making a motion? I, I, no, not at this time.
No.
No motion. Consideration of the historic Vogue The... Oh, do you need to take?
There's no motion, so there's no action.
All right. Consideration of historic Vogue Theater to receive approval for a social district permit. The Downtown Development Authority, DDA, would like to request support and approval for the Vogue Theater to receive a social district permit. This will allow the Vogue Theater to sell alcohol beverages that can be consumed in the identified social district area. At this time, council could take action to support and approve the resolution for the social district permit for the historic Vogue Theater. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I just wanted to point out that they're already selling alcohol, so this just prevents them, permits them to go outside into the social district, correct? Or am I misunderstanding that? Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Heather, would you please take a roll?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of commission appointment. The Housing Commission has taken action to advertise among the residents, the one resident vacancy, five-year term ending 5/31/28. This is a mayoral appointment, which requires a motion, second, and council voted support. Following applications have been received. James Taylor III, 237 Sixth Avenue, number 325. Cruz Vasquez, 37 Sixth Avenue, number 425. Glenn Gibbs, 1719 and 1/2 Fine Street. Roberta Huff, 237 Sixth Avenue, number 301. Lisa Smith, 237 Sixth Avenue, number 119. Deborah Kaiser, 237 Sixth Avenue, number 508. I would like to appoint James Taylor, 237 Sixth Avenue, number 325. The city of Manistee, appointment noted, Housing Commission for a five-year term ending 5/31/28. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Support. Go ahead.
Any discussion? Heather, could you please take a roll?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of application to boards and commissions. The city clerk has taken action to advertise vacancies on the Board of Review, Compensation Commission, Harbor Commission, PEG Commission, Tree Commission, and Board of Review. Mayoral and manager appointments require motion, second, and council voted support. Nominations for council appointments do not require a second. After all nominations are made, council votes on the nominees until one nominee receives majority support. The following applications have been received. Board of Review, two vacancies, one alternate term ending 12/31/23 and one alternate term ending 12/31/25. Applicants must be tax-paying electors of the city who are owners of property assessed for taxes in the city and, and the time of their appointment are neither elected or appointed officials of the city council appointment. Am I appointing this one or?
No, we have a council question. We just need a nomination.
I'd like to appoint Judy Ann Sibley at 241 Hughes Street for the term, for the alternate term ending 12/31/25.
I support it.
Heather, would you please take a roll?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Nomination approved.
Thank you. Discussion on the Ramsdale and community pool agreement. Do you want to start with the?
I could pull up the budget.
This Ramsdale information?
Yes. Well, I know this is hard to read. I've asked Finance Director Ed Bradford to...
Guys, please.
So I've asked Finance Director Ed Bradford to show kind of the year-over-year revenue and expenditures of the Ramsdale. To show kind of how it's been, how it's been working. I think there's a fund balance one at the very bottom. Now go back up. So I think ultimately, unlike the Vogue, there, there is, there are personnel costs, so there... You know, I think the goal is for the Ramsdale to be self-sufficient at some point. So I thought this kind of shows how lean it's been over the years, but I think we all want to see the Ramsdale succeed. And that's about increasing revenues and obviously limiting expenditures. And we appreciate all the volunteer efforts that Ramsdale supporters have done, but it is a lean budget, so... I don't know if there's any comments, but I thought this was, this kind of showed how, how lean it is.
I'm, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Go ahead. I, I just want to say I'm impressed with the volunteers that step up and are on the board. I appreciate all the work that they've done. It strikes me though, having been on boards and knowing how much work is involved, it might be helpful if they had more than six people on the board to help them move forward. So I just wanted to make sure that I, I made a comment about that because I don't know if they have a number that they need to hit or what their rules are as far as...
I actually have a couple of comments. So I, I've received quite a few emails that say, you know, "Why do you want to get rid of the Ramsdale? Why do you not support the Ramsdale?" That's absolutely not true. I 100% support the Ramsdale. I'm a donor of the Ramsdale. My company is a donor of the Ramsdale. I would like to see it flourish and be amazing because it is unique. It is unique to this town. My issues are the staff quit, the director resigned, the board president at the time walked away when he should have stepped up. That's an issue. I just, I have an issue with things that are a problem and need to be addressed. So hopefully this new board will, will address those things and they will flourish and they will be amazing. I also have an issue with the, the numbers here for 2020. When it was shut down for nine months, the numbers are exactly the same. Like, how is that possible? So that concerns me. So it's not a, it's not a thing where I don't think we should support the Ramsdale and we shouldn't have it and I don't support the arts. I absolutely do. I'm just trying to figure out what is broken and what needs to be done so it doesn't go under. And it's here for many, many generations. That's, that's my issue.
Since this is a discussion amongst the council members, would it be better if we had some sort of a work session where actually included members of the RRCA?
We could do that. We can definitely schedule that.
So the ultimate goal of this discussion, if I'm entertaining the mayor correctly, is you have been told of issues within the organization that you think need to be addressed.
Yes.
And are not being addressed. It's not an issue of the budget so much, it's the internal operating of the organization. Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, the only issue that I have with the budget, which is passed now, is they were shut down for nine months and the numbers that we have are still exactly the same. Like, how, how can that possibly be? How can the electric bill be exactly the same when nobody's there? There's not shows going. It doesn't make sense to me.
Well, I can address that a little bit on the revenue side.
Well, I can address that a little bit on the revenue side. There was a lot of grant dollars. Can you scroll up on that, Heather? So the, the fiscal years also, remember, Mayor, are split, so they don't exactly line up with a calendar year. So the Ramsdale was basically shut down from March of 2020 through October of 2020. So it's partially in fiscal year 2020 and partial in fiscal year 2021. We received a pretty sizable grant from the federal government that spanned those fiscal years, that you can see that in there. It, it came in in fiscal year 2021, and you can see it went from sixty to ninety thousand, and then a portion of that came in in fiscal year 22. We were open for a little bit of time in 2020, and then we had to close back down again in December. So we did have reductions in events, and there's a baseline temperature that we have to keep the building to protect it. So I don't know if that answers your questions or not, but those are the numbers straight off of the financial system in the nine nineties.
But would the prices come to be the same thing year after year?
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
Is it two years where the bills are exactly the same thing?
Well, you can see that it went from thirty-five to thirty-three to thirty-nine. So they, it did go down a little bit, but it's fairly consistent. When you're running, when you're running the, the HVAC system, it, it takes electricity, and you're burning, you know, you're burning gas. And there was activity in the building, except for that, that period of about five months when we, you know, we wouldn't, weren't open to the public. But then we did open back up for a number of months. Part of it, I think, is the timing between the two, between the fiscal years as well.
How come, Ed, in your twenty-one, twenty-two budget, it shows fifty thousand on your paper up there, when we voted in for forty-five thousand that year, and the next year, suddenly it was raised to fifty thousand that we voted on, and nobody seemed to catch it that year? It was down at forty-five. How did that get up in this, oh, and here on fifty thousand on the budget?
I believe fifty thousand was the number that was approved. I think it had been suggested to reduce the appropriations at one point, but it was, it was retained at fifty.
I remember that.
I got my papers from that, and I look back on my old city.
And I've got my papers that show it at fifty, so I, I believe it was approved at fifty thousand. But we can revisit the resolution if you'd like.
Well, in two thousand twenty-two, it was raised up, but then back there, it was forty-five.
I know back then, we did have the same situation where we wanted to, you know, have it increased or decreased, but I don't know. I think we went back up to fifty at some point.
Yeah, but through the next year.
That's kind of how I remember it, too, because we did discuss that forty-five number, but it, what, that's not what we voted on.
Because I think Ramsdale thought that wasn't enough.
Well, it says right here, which council reduced the forty-five in the budget?
I think that was during COVID, when everybody, we cut everybody's budget ten percent, or something like that. I don't, I don't really have anything else. I just, I want to get.
I could pull up the pool agreement, or? Okay.
Actually, before you go out of there, I do have a question on the, so we were going to discuss in the, the agreement. Like, we were gonna, are we gonna update this agreement? Because this one is from two thousand and sixteen, that has the seventy thousand in it.
Are there certain items? Yeah, if you mention them, we can.
Yeah, it's seven B.
Yeah, updating that amount.
And then seven C, like, I would kind of like to have that in-kind service described, not just a vague, unless it's in here somewhere else under.
It is, there's another section.
Ten A?
All of section ten.
Okay. That's all I had on those two.
Okay. And effectively, the pool agreement is a five-year agreement and another five years, so ten years, if we look at the term. If you scroll down a little bit. So the city contributes forty thousand per year.
How many years did you say?
Um, so.
I'll keep going.
Term of agreement, so it's five years, and the effective date's October fifteenth or sixteenth, two thousand nineteen, five years, then automatically new, without further action, for an additional five years, so till October, I guess October fifteenth, sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. And there's not, there's, you know, I was discussing with the attorney, you know, I think there's a failure to comply, but there isn't. Basically, unless there's cause, it's a five-year agreement, potentially ten-year agreement.
Which ends twenty twenty-four, right?
The first five years, yeah.
I really think there's a huge benefit to the entire community and the entire county for having a pool, and I certainly know, have known many people who have used facilities just for physical therapy. So I, I, I do appreciate this, that we have. I also know that, that MAFS personnel have been in front of us, and they have expressed, not this year, prior year, the fact that their costs have gone up on the chemicals and everything that they put in the pool, the maintenance. And I'll say what I've said for the last couple of years on the pool. I love the pool, but what bothers me is I want to make sure that we know who, how many users are actually using it. I think it's a, just a good statistical number that we need to have, and I don't know if they've improved their checking in of people and, and making sure, are you a resident or a non-resident kind of thing? And I don't know. I never got a really solid answer the last few years, but that doesn't mean that I'm against the pool, but I just think it's something we should have, so. And I don't know how to get to that without maybe asking the city manager to ask the superintendent for those numbers and how their procedures are working now.
Well, it would have to be more than just people coming to visit, because it's got the team, the therapy, there's, right?
Well, probably, yeah, but.
And the number of users would include a lot more than just people topical swimming.
Well, I think for the, they're not charging the kids to come and swim competitively when they're.
Yeah, I think the last time we talked about this, I agreed with you, Linda, but the problem was some of the townships weren't paying anything.
Correct.
And that's what I asked if we could bring this up.
This, this going to go through twenty twenty-four, correct?
Yes.
So are we talking about revisiting it in twenty twenty-four and redoing the contract in twenty twenty-four, or what are we talking about exactly?
I'm not talking about that. I would just like them to come forward and give us some statistical information on how many people are, you know, coming in. Just seems like the right thing to ask for.
Update, don't they?
I don't, I don't recall, since I've been here, I don't recall one, but I can contact them and ask them for user fee information, and maybe come to a future council meeting and present that.
I would be okay with that. I, I'm not too okay with the additional five years automatically renewing. I think that's a lengthy lease.
Yeah, I think we should revisit it for twenty twenty-four. I mean, actually, with its contract, we should not automatically renew.
Yes.
We should sit down and talk about what's a value to us, and what's a value to the community, and what we want to contribute to it. I think that's fair.
I think that we shouldn't have an automatic renew on any leases, because it's a problem sometimes.
Yeah, I think.
Well, if you go the other way, they could ask us for sixty thousand.
You know, just, just so we're clear on this, and this is a unique agreement among agreements that the city enters into with no termination clause, but the renewal is automatic here. It's, it's really a ten-year lease, not a five-year lease. And it only, only if there's a reason or justification under other terms of the lease could it be terminated earlier than that. So at the five years, you can talk to the school, but any, any change requires the mutual agreement of both parties.
Oh, they didn't have to agree to that, though, is big.
Yes.
So we're in this, we're in this for ten years, huh?
Yes.
So it's pointless to even have this discussion.
Well, I mean, you can always have the conversation with the other side, but.
It would be nice to know how many people are using it.
Well, George, when it comes to the ten-year, do we ask for a meeting then?
Well, certainly at the ten-year point, the city and the school either need to strike a new agreement, or there is no agreement at that point.
Did the school aware of right this?
Oh, yes, and, and, and I recall the discussion about this, because it was, you know, very different from any other agreement we'd entered into, so.
There's no way of making any adjustments to this at all?
Without negotiation and agreement of the other side, correct. Now, there are requirements that need to be met regarding the maintenance and obligations to the city, but as long as those are being met, no, there's no ability to change anything without the other side's consent.
Boy, I'm glad my name's not on that. Okay, so do you want to move on? Okay. Where are we? Okay, citizens' concerns and comments. Citizens' comments, this is an opportunity for citizens in attendance to comment on municipal services, activities, or areas of city involvement. Limited to five minutes, letters submitted to council will not be publicly read. Nobody's moving. Anybody? Okay, Mr. Gamble.
I'd just like to thank the council staff for their work on the budget, which they did, and also clerk's office for their work on the election yesterday, and it was a long day for Heather, so. Thank you.
I can't even see who, any other officials, staff?
No, I'll just bring up on Saturday, May sixth, from noon to two, we have the meet and greet for the permanent fire chief candidate, Mr. Thomas Herndon. We'll be hosting that at the fire department. It's a time for all of us to get to know him, ask our questions before he's presented to council on the sixteenth, so.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bachman.
I said one thing. I have said many times that I use this seat to vote on things based on what people tell me and the people in the community, and I've listened to the Ramsdale Theater, and I would, if this was a vote, I would vote in favor of the Ramsdale Theater, because they have spoken. I've been talked to personally, and I've heard through voicemail and email, so I wouldn't, I respect their opinion, and I respect the work that they do, and I would certainly vote in favor of what they're doing, so.
I, too, would like to say something about the Ramsdale. My mother majored in theater at Northwestern University, in theater and, and acting and civic players, organizations for Birmingham, Blue Hill Hills, Rochester Hills, et cetera, et cetera, was a great outlook for her, and of course, we always went to see mom. So it's been, it's been a joy. She, her disappointment is that I didn't pursue anything in the theater, I'm sure, but I will tell you one thing about my mother. When I was making the decision back in two thousand and two to move to Manistee County, I consulted with my parents, because at that time, I was also going through stage three cancer, and I just felt like I needed to talk to them. And I told them that I was thinking about moving to Manistee, and my mom paused for a moment, and she goes, "They have a wonderful theater there. You should try out for a play." And I thought, she had no idea that it was that close to Lake Michigan at all, but she knew that it had a theater there, and she knew the name of it. And I don't think I'll forget that conversation for as long as I live. So thank you.
Mr. Grabowski.
My wife and I go to the Ramsdale, and we love going there, and the thing is, what we were concerned about, nobody wanted to close the Ramsdale. It was, there was no question even about the closing of it. We just had a lot of bad reports, like the mayor said, with people quitting and getting fired, and, and people coming to us on the side and saying, hey, there's no budget there. And so we were very concerned with what's going on there. And I even had people today at my house concerned about it, the closing and all that. So I said to them, "Don't worry about closing, it's just that we want to make sure there's a budget even there." And so they told, somebody told me on the phone, they worked there, and there was no budget. So, I mean, what's going on here? That's why we were concerned. So that's why I would like, and I brought this up many times when we have budget meetings, I would like the people who are requesting money, I've asked time and time again, if somebody could come up, and that means make a presentation. This stuff about, you know, just sending in a book to us and saying, hey, okay this, and we don't even know half the time why we're okaying something. So I'd like to see somebody come in and give us a presentation. I've asked that from every group involved in us, with us. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
And rest assured.